I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor Tesher?
Here.
Counselor Taylor?
Here.
Counselor Vega?
Here.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Saniget?
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Present.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Here.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. And Counselor Robinson?
Here.
Nine members present. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, memorials and celebratory resolutions.
We have none. Our first order of business is public speaking.
Is there any members of the public who would like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Catherine Palencia and I'm at 1005 Broadway. Honorable City Council members, as the children's librarian at the Chelsea Public Library, I'm thrilled to announce that we're gearing up for a fantastic summer session. Right now, I'm welcoming a wave of young learners from our local public schools. This influx is a testament to the vital role libraries play in fostering a love of reading and lifelong learning. The Chelsea Public Library offers a vibrant space filled with books, resources, and programs. Let me assure you and the entire community that our library boasts a top-notch air conditioning system, providing an escape from the summer heat, is a perfect environment to explore new worlds through books, participate in educational activities, or enjoy some quiet time. The Chelsea Public Library is a cornerstone of our community, providing invaluable resources and fostering a love of learning. We look forward to a vibrant summer session filled with young minds exploring the vast world of knowledge. I would like to extend a warm invitation to all members of the City Council to visit our library. We love the wonderful resources we have to offer residents of all ages. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public speaking? Seeing none, we'll close this portion of the meeting.
Next order of business, we have approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the City Council dated May 6, 2024.
Accept and file minutes under suspension of the rules if there are objections.
Seeing none, so ordered.
We move on to communications from the City Manager. We have a copy of a communication received from the City Manager requesting approval of appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Dear Counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For reappointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Board, Mr. Mohamed Kasim of Chelsea for a new three-year term. For appointment to the Board of Assessors, Mr. John Tagliatella of Chelsea for a new three-year term. For appointment to the Tree Board, Ms. Diane Paxton of Chelsea for a new three-year term. And for reappointment to the Disability Commission, Ms. Susan Blackstone of Chelsea for a new three-year term. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Copies of resumes are attached.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. There'll be something coming up on the new business.
Move to, uh, move to a second reading and, uh, and a public hearing? Oh, sorry. Just a second reading, sorry. Okay.
Next, we have a communication received from the City Manager responding to City Council Order 24C-26 renaming Arlington Street Extension to Walnut Street. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to Communication 24C-26 requesting that Arlington Street Extension be renamed Walnut Street. After receipt of the communication, we have had several internal meetings to review the process and feasibility.
Seeing none, so ordered.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to City Council.
Sorry, I have my hand up for, just if I could speak on the matter.
Sure.
If it's possible. Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank the City Manager, um, for, um, bringing attention and also the report back here. I know we had folks come up and have discussion. I've actually been in a meeting with the City Manager regarding this here and I'm grateful to the work that he's doing to, um, listen to the residents. Um, especially, want to give a shout out to Ms. Smith who was, um, really bringing a lot of events and work, um, diligently about, um, renaming this street where it was in the past. So, want to thank, um, the City Manager for his work and his finding in it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-106 and 24-107, Broadway to Clark Avenue Staircase. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to the Council Orders 21-406 and 21-107 regarding the staircase connecting Broadway to Clark Avenue. Counselor Coopero?
Seeing none, so ordered.
We have a copy of a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-108, overgrown tree between 116 and 120 Clark Avenue. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to Council Order 24-108. Counselor Jimenez?
Motion to waive the rest of the reading, uh, accept and file under communication. If there are no objections.
Seeing none, so ordered.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-109, request for line painting. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to the Council Order 24-109, requesting that the Department of Public Works. Counselor Coopero?
I'd like to accept the communication. I'd like to speak on it if there's possible.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Uh, this is, uh, to paint the lines on from Congress Ave down where the said, the board approved to make it a bicycle lane and a car lane. So they should be, was already approved by the board that that's the way it should be, and it should be marked. If you don't put the lane saying that the cars can go there because what that does is it frees up the way for going down. From Congress Ave going down to, to be, to the mullers, it frees up the way, so that should be done and I hope it's done soon. Or at least put a sign there saying that the people can use it as a car lane too. Thank you.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-113, request for accounting for storefront improvement program. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to Council Order 24-113. Counselor Jimenez?
Uh, motion to waive the rest of the reading, accept and file under communication if there are no objections.
Seeing none, so ordered.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-114, payment process for parking tickets. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to Council Order 24-114. Counselor Coopero?
Accept and file the communication. I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Uh, this is the order where people can pay, uh, online instead of paying all the tickets that they owe, pay the amount of ticket that they have to pay. So thanks to City Manager for implementing this and thank you. That's, citizens of the city, thank you. Thank you.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-119, request for crime reports. Dear Counselors, I am writing in response to Council Order 24-119, requesting crime reports from the Chelsea Police Department. I have reviewed this request with our police chief. The Chelsea Police Department does an amazing job with data and is focused on transparency to our community. Counselor Coopero?
Accept and file the communication. If there's an objection.
Seeing none, so ordered.
We have a communication received from the City Manager responding to Council Order 24-126, departments available to answer phone calls. Dear Counselors, I write in response to Council.
Accept and file the communication. I'd like to speak on it if it's possible.
You have the floor.
Uh, this is another order to make facilitate the people of Chelsea a little better. There's some of them, even though they call 311 and 311 can't answer everything they say, and some people, uh, do still want to speak to somebody in that department. So, this is the, to facilitate them. And that's a good, good thing to do. The City Manager? Yes, here, like it says, they have a run of 311. So, is, as a ci, what is the city actually going to do? Are they going to make them talk to people? Okay, so we, that, that's a good thing. So people, the ones that can't get answers from 311 can go to the department. It's a good thing. So it helps in two ways. It helps 311 and it helps the people that really don't want any answers from 311 because there is people that don't want answers from 311. They want to talk to the departments. Thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager, for implementing that.
We have a communication received from the City Manager regarding the PEG Access and Community Preservation Act fiscal year 25 budgets. Dear Counselors, I am writing to request approval of both the PEG Access Budget and the Community Preservation Act Budget for fiscal year 2025. Pursuant to Mass General Act Chapter 44, Section 53, F3-4, all Comcast payments required by the 10-year Comcast renewal license are paid into our PEG Access and Cable-related Fund.
Counsel Robinson?
Yeah, can we waive the rest of the meeting and just point out what the numbers are on Chelsea Community Cable and School Department and City Manager's Office? Mr. Clerk?
There will be two orders attached. The first is approving the PEG Access Budget in the amount of $218,600 for Chelsea Community Cable Television, $85,000 for the Chelsea School Department, and $130,000 for the City of Chelsea through the City Manager's Office. For the Community Preservation Committee operating budget, the funds will be $117,067 or 10% of estimated revenue for acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. $117,067, 10% of estimated revenue for acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources. $117,067 or 10% of estimated revenue for acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing. And $760,933 or 65% of estimated revenue to the budgeted reserve. And from FY '24 estimated reserves, $58,533 for CPC administrative expenses. There'll be something coming up on the new business. Moving on to communications and petitions to the Council, we have a communication received from the Assistant Parking Clerk regarding the agenda items approved at the May 7, 2024 meeting of the Traffic and Parking Commission. Counselor Jimenez?
I would like to hold out item two for discussion, um, and move the rest of the items, uh, accept and file. Is that, is that possible? I know that we've done that in the past.
Uh, is your request to take agenda item number two, are you requesting to move it to conference is what you're asking for?
Before I do that, I would just like to ask the City Manager what the city's position is on the, the proposal on the special parking district.
You can make a motion to suspend the rules and have the City Manager talk if you prefer.
Without objection. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Counselors. Um, I will say that, that, that the, um, the process for the, uh, uh, the development that is happening, uh, uh, in the Soldier's Home, is a process that, that has been, uh, ongoing for over a year, uh, um, through the, the, their, uh, their permitting process. A lot of outreach was done to the butters, uh, and this, this is essentially the last, you know, last approval that is required for the, the, uh, the project. The project is going to be very impactful, uh, in terms of the, the amount of housing that is going to be, uh, 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 created. And, um, uh, Traffic and Parking Commission worked very closely with, with, with the developer to ensure that once the process was, was fully built out, uh, the, the parking impacts, uh, would not spill into the, the, the greater, uh, uh, neighborhood. We feel really positive about what the end state is, uh, and, and we do feel that the creation of a parking district, uh, uh, is going to really, really mitigate the impacts on, on the entire neighborhood.
Thank you. No need to hold out the item. Thank you. Motion to, uh, accept and file, um, under communication. If there are no objections.
Yep, so ordered.
Move on to committee reports. We have a committee report received from Counselor Taylor regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means held on May 7, 2024.
I just asked the clerk to, to read the report.
Counselor Taylor, Chair of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means, opened the meeting at 11:10 a.m. regarding Agenda Item 24-F50, an appropriation of $450,000 for the Chelsea Onward Comprehensive Master Plan. Deputy City Manager Devon Fields noted the cost is in line with other communities and that the planning process, which will include a community outreach, is anticipated to last for up to two years. Regarding Agenda Item 24-F51, an appropriation of $245,500 for Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program for Chelsea High School graduates. Now, in its sixth year, the program pays for two years of tuition for students to earn an associate's degree. The payment to Bunker Hill is based on student enrollment and carries over from year to year, not an upfront payment to Bunker Hill. Agenda Item 24-F52, an appropriation of $200,000 for the Downtown Initiative. Of that, approximately $60,000 will be allocated for the storefront improvement program. The remainder will be used to support citywide events and provide grants to local nonprofits. And Agenda Item 24-F53, an appropriation of $100,000 for upgrades to Munis. Munis serves as the city's accounting software and is not being utilized to its full potential. Planned upgrades include payroll improvements, an employee self-service module, HR-related improvements, and the decentralization of the accounts payable process. The meeting adjourned at 11:39 a.m.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. No objections.
Counselor Jimenez?
No objection, just a really quick question that I don't know if anybody on the council can, can ask. I'm just, I just want to make sure that I understand. Is the, uh, the, the, the last item, uh, 24-F53, uh, is that upgrades to the membership with, that we have with Munis already? Or is it work to make sure that what we have is being used to its fullest potential?
Ms. Clerk, you want to answer that question?
Um, unless you want the City Manager to answer, I was at the meeting. Um, my understanding is it's to, uh, use the software that's existing now. Currently, the city doesn't utilize the software in the manner that it can be utilized, so the funds will be used to expand the software that we have, not add anything additional.
Thank you.
Okay, next order of business.
We have a copy of a committee report received from the Subcommittee on Elder Services, Veterans Affairs, and Community Advancement regarding the meeting held May 7, 2024. Counselor Coopero?
I'd like the clerk to read the rest of it so that people can understand what it's actually going to go on.
Counselor Coopero, Chair of the Subcommittee on Elder Services, Veterans Affairs, and Community Advancement, opened the meeting at 6:04 p.m. Recognizing Counsel Robinson to who made an opening statement. The Director of Veteran Services, Francisco Toro, provided an update to those in attendance on the program for the city's Memorial Day event. A sufficient supply of flags for both Memorial Day and the Field of Honor event to be held in Chelsea Square have been purchased and are in stock. A flashing sign provided by the Chelsea Police Department will be positioned in Bellingham Square informing residents about the event. According to Health and Human Services Director Ned Keef, the city is anticipating approximately 280 to 300 attendees, including performers and speakers, and will have food totaling 350 portions. Tickets will be provided and stamped to ensure attendees are able to receive food. All student performers will have food brought to them to ensure they do not have to wait in line. The sound system for the event will be provided by the same company that services Chelsea High School graduations. The meeting adjourned at 6:32 p.m.
Accept and file the communication. I'd like to speak on it if it's possible.
You have the floor, Counselor.
Um, I'm, the clerk read this so all the people of the city of Chelsea can understand how the event goes. So when you come there, you have to get a ticket if you want to get food. Make sure that you remember that you have to get a ticket. You just can't go up to the truck and get food. So that's why I, I asked the clerks to read it so the people of the city can understand exactly how it is. It's not like there'd be a past where you would go up and get the food that you have. This year is different. There'd be a food truck and there's so many portions like it says there. So to make sure that you get your food, you have to make sure that you got a ticket. So remember, make sure you get a ticket and everything will be a great event this year. I hope it's going to be a great event and many, many people will come and come and celebrate the veterans that served our nation. I hope to see many of yous and thank you.
Moving on to second readings, we have a communication received from the City Manager being read for the second time, requesting approval of appointments to boards and commissions. Dear Counselors, pursue.
Can, can we waive the rest of the reading and vote on it?
Without objection. Just, just go ahead and name the people and the boards.
For reappointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals, Ms. Marilyn Vega Torres of Chelsea. For reappointment to the Conservation Commission, Mr. Steven Sarikas of Chelsea and Ms. Judy Dyer of Chelsea. For reappointment to the Board of Library Trustees, Ms. Christina Larson Shaw Burns of Chelsea. For reappointment to the Community Recreation Advisory Board, Vanessa Mendoza Mercado of Chelsea. For reappointment to the Licensing Commission, Mr. Ennio Lopez of Chelsea. For appointment to the Disability Commission, Ms. Mary Montgomery of Chelsea. And for reappointment to the Council of Elder Affairs, Rebecca Swoop, Robert Malley, Flor Alba Geraldo, Anthony Bon Giovanni, Greg Walczek, Celeste Williams of Chelsea for new three-year terms.
Do we take a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Mr. Clerk, uh, will you call the roll, please?
Roll call vote requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesher?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Appointment's approved. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of funds in the amount of $450,000 from free cash to the FY 2024 City Manager Professional Services expense account for the Chelsea Onward Comprehensive Master Plan.
That's for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Roll call vote requested. Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesher?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council.
Make the rest of the reading and take a roll call vote?
For an order?
Can we just?
I, I, I think, I think we need to, I think we need to read the order.
Yeah.
You don't have to.
I think we will.
I missed, what, what are we saying, talking about now?
Just, just reading the order itself and then we'll move it to, we can, somebody can move it to a roll call vote.
Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $245,500 from free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship Program expense account to provide tuition funding for Chelsea High School graduates.
That's for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesher?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of $200,000 in free cash to the FY '24 Housing and Community Development Contract Services expense account for the Downtown Initiative, including local organizations and small business support, civic engagement, and public art and events.
That's for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections. Seeing none.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Tesher?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of funds in the amount of $100,000 from free cash to the FY '24 City Manager Professional Services expense account for business process optimization and upgrades to our Munis accounting system.
That's for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Seeing none.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tesher?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, two absent. Order is adopted. Final order under second readings introduced by Counsel President DeJesus being read for the second time. Order that pursuant to Section 9-5, multiple member bodies, for the Chelsea City Charter, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves a waiver of residency for Janice Tatarca to serve on the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. President, I move, uh, to adopt, um, under suspension of the rules. If there are no objections, I would like to speak on it.
Uh, you need a roll call vote.
Move for a roll call vote, um.
You have the floor.
Yeah. So, you know, the, the conflict with, uh, this, uh, request from the City Manager was that, um, it is requesting a waiver of residency for, uh, Janice Tatarca who has been a member of the ZBA for a number of years now. The issue that comes with this is that once you live outside of the city, it becomes a little, um, conflicting when somebody else who does live in the city wants to also serve on the board. That being said, Janice Tatarca has proven a strong record of being a strong advocate and, and a very involved and immersed member of the community and she has, um, gracefully continued her work in the ZBA and has done an outstanding, um, effort, um, and, uh, you know, efficient job at handling the, um, ZBA. And for that reason, I think she's definitely an outstanding member that does deserve the, um, I would say, privilege of having that extension, um, and waiver approved. However, it is with the understanding that this will, this will not mean a reappointment to the board unless she lives within the City of Chelsea.
Any other speakers?
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Um, I agree with, um, the concerns of my, um, fellow counsel. Janice has been a great, um, resident of the city. She's actually been a resident of District Eight for the most of her he, years here. Um, she's served, um, very, um, with dedication. Um, she's served honos honestly and, you know, she showed up at every meeting. She gave a thought. She took both sides of the stories and she worked with the other members on the zoning board. And this is something that we've done in the past when we could not have, um, filled a board with someone right away that if the person was willing, even though they moved out of the city, to still continue to be in that position, we would give them an opportunity. What we must do is continue to look for other folks that when this happens and when folks are, terms are coming up or moving, we need to have folks in position to take over some of these boards. But I think Janice, with her expertise, her background, her dedication to the city over the many years that she's been here and her willingness to serve gives us, um, should, um, allow us to, um, support the City Manager with this waiver residency for Janice until we can find someone that can come in and do that job also. Thank you.
Counselor Saniget?
I agree with everything that's been said about Ms. Tatarca. And I was just wondering, um, if anyone here knows how much time is left on her term?
Feb, till February, I believe.
Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Actually, Janice has served on the zoning board for, uh, several years. Been a valuable asset to the planning board. Uh, she is an attorney and her, her background deals with zoning issues. So therefore, she's been a very valuable member to the board and has been given a lot of good advice on a lot of complicated cases that go before the, uh, board. So I'll be voting in favor of her.
Any other speakers? Okay, let's move to a roll call vote.
Thank you.
A yes vote to a. A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent, and Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Nine members in favor, zero opposed. Two absent. Order and residency waiver are approved. Move on to new business. First order of new business, we have an order introduced by Counsel President DeJesus. Order that the following sums, as classified and designated with respect to each department or undertaking as salaries, operations, and maintenance, and capital, are hereby appropriated in the General Fund of the City of Chelsea as listed below and as summarized. Salaries, fifty-eight million, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Operations and maintenance, one hundred and eighty-five million, eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-three dollars. And capital, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty, totaling two hundred and forty-five million, two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Please, the second reading. Accept and follow the communication.
Refer to Ways and Means. Motion to, no?
Second reading.
For, yeah.
And public hearing.
Yeah, so we'll move to a second reading and a public hearing. Counsel Robinson?
You don't want it to go to Ways and Means. We just want it to go to second reading.
Well, we've, yeah, I mean, we've already had a conference. On it, I think.
Yeah, the, the next four line items before you are all for the FY 25 budget.
Counselor Recupero?
Can we amend a certain section of that?
Amendments, my understanding, amendments are not being accepted today. Amendments will be accepted prior to the public hearing on June 3rd. And a reminder, counsel can amend to delete, but cannot amend to add or appropriate funds into the budget.
So we can add? We can deduct?
That's correct.
So what happens if you want to add?
The proper avenue to request additions to the budget would be via a separate order requesting the city manager appropriate funds, in which case it would be the city manager prerogative whether he decides to appropriate the funds or not.
To the clerk. Any orders, uh, and that relate to the budget and any reductions have to be in writing.
It has been requested by Counsel President DeJesus in the office that if you have any amendments to the budget that you would like to make, to submit them to the office as early as you can. They are amendments, so there's no requirement that they have to be in written. Um, but given that it will require calculations on the night of, getting them to me fast enough will allow it, me and the city manager's team to get them calculated in time. But it's your prerogative. If you choose not to, it's, it's within your right to amend on the floor if you choose.
Counselor Jimenez?
Just, since we have a number of counselors who this is our first budget, um, if it would be possible just to get an email with any dates that are important for us to, for any amendment submission, that would be much appreciated, Mr. Clerk.
I'll send them out. Um, I would say our regular meeting deadline, which is the Wednesday prior to.
Perfect.
We'll make it easier, but even if you wanted to submit them that week, giving me the Monday before the meeting will suffice.
Thank you.
So that last order was moved to public hearing and second reading. We have an order introduced by Counsel President DeJesus regarding the appropriations for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, Sewer Enterprise Fund. Order that the following sums designated as appropriations are hereby appropriated in the Sewer Enterprise Fund of the City of Chelsea as follows. Salaries in the amount of seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and four. Operations and maintenance expense appropriations in the amount of eleven million, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-one. And capital appropriations in the amount of two million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand, forty-three, for a total of fourteen million, eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Move to a second reading?
And a public hearing?
Public hearing.
Okay, so order.
If there are no objections.
Counselor?
We have an, we have an order introduced by Counsel President DeJesus regarding appropriations for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, Water Enterprise Fund.
I move to waive the rest of the reading and to, uh, move to a second reading.
Just read, ju, Mr. Clerk, just read the, the, uh, the amounts, please.
Uh, amounts for Water Enterprise. Salary appropriations, seven hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and four. Operations and maintenance, seven million, six hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty. And capital appropriations, two million, thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-two, for a total of ten million, four hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Sorry, Counselor Tesh?
Move to a second reading.
And a public hearing?
Public hearing.
Without objection.
Our final order relating to the budget introduced by Counsel President DeJesus regarding appropriations for free cash. Order that the city appropriations and assessments in the general fund are to be financed in part by certified free cash of the City of Chelsea as follows. Free cash in the amount of seven hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and eight dollars.
Does also need a public hearing? Move to a second reading and, uh, public, schedule a public hearing. If there are no objections.
Without objection?
Next order of business, we have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F3-4, the Chelsea City Council hereby approves the FY 25 PEG access budget as follows. Two hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred for Chelsea Cable Television, eighty-five thousand for Chelsea Public Schools, and the one hundred and thirty thousand for the City of Chelsea through the city manager's office.
Motion to refer to Ways and Means? If there are no objections?
Seeing none. Counselor?
No, he's fine.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Taylor. Order that the Chelsea City Council act on the report of the Community Preservation Committee on the FY 25 Community Preservation Budget in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6, and be a further order that the Chelsea City Council reserve for-
Mr. Chair, um, motion to waive the reading, uh, just read the numbers and, uh, refer to Ways and Means, uh, under suspension. If there are no objections?
Do you want to just read the amounts?
The funds designated are as follows. One hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-seven for acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space. One hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-seven for acquisition, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic resources. One hundred and seventeen thousand, sixty-seven for acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing. Seven hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three to the budgeted reserve. And from FY 24 estimated revenues, fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three for CPC administrative expenses. Move to a second reading and Ways and Means. Next, we have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that the city manager provide to the city council an accounting of how much free cash has been expended since the fund was certified by the Department of Revenue on January 31st, 2024.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption, and for the record, the city manager and I have been having conversations back and forth, and, uh, he will provide that information to the whole council.
Anyone else would like to speak on it?
So, I have a question.
Counsel, Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So are we, um, having a roll call on the unofficial number or just the adoption of this here? Okay, so, but it states that you want him to provide us the amount. Correct?
Yeah, so he'll give us the amount.
Okay.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus is absent. Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent, and Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. Two absent. Order adopted. Our final order of new business, we have an order introduced by Counsel Robinson. Order that the city manager provide to the city council a citywide operational overview and a thorough update of initiatives launched as part of the FY 2025 budget, and that this update be done every six months going forward.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. We, city manager and I have been talking back and forth, and we think this would be a good mechanism for the council to be up to date as to where we are in regards to the city.
Anyone else want to speak on it? Okay.
Yes, vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega?
Yes.
Counselor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor DeJesus absent. Counsel Brown? Counselor Recupero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia is absent. Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed. Two absent. Order adopted. Move on to public announcements.
Public announcements. Okay, Counselor Recupero?
Good evening, citizens of Chelsea. I have, uh, something to say to the young professionals of our city. They have all these dogs. They have all these dogs. It's okay. You take your little bag and you clean up after your dogs. But I don't think it's sanitary for them to make them go urinate and defecate inside of a park where the little kids play. I have dogs myself. Even if you pick it up, the germs are still there. You won't want your little kid to go on top of a park and grab something from these dogs. I'm a dog lover. I got dogs myself. But I'm also a caring parent that I don't want my grandchildren to go out and get something from these things. We do have a dog park, and it's right near Amherst Hill. That park, you can do whatever you want, and it's, we specifically spent money for the park to have it there, for the dogs. So if you care about the young children of our city, if you don't care about the older people, that's okay, because older people don't roam around in the park. The young kids are the ones that go there. And I get a lot of complaints from parents telling me that they see all these dogs go inside of these parks, and then they're afraid to get their kids. And I don't blame them. If you care about people, or you care about the younger generation, you will care. Nobody's telling you that you're not picking it up. I see yous pick it up. That ain't the problem. The problem is what stays behind. When you urinate and you defecate inside, you, you think you're picking it up, but you really ain't picking it up. The germs are still there. So please, be considerate towards the little kids that play in the park. And make sure you don't, you take your dogs, and you want them to do it outside the park, and you can pick it up. Make sure you don't do it inside the park, or if you have to, go near Amherst Hill. There's a specific park that is designated for the canines. So thank you very much, and I hope you will listen and won't do that. Thank you.
Any other public announcements? Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Again, um, want to just, um, say, forgot to put two orders in today. One was a Mental Illness Month of May. Um, want to just say, um, we recognize the Mental Illness Month. Um, we want to support the folks that's dealing with that and also give more knowledge about it. So, um, it's just something that we, um, I forgot to put in. But I want to recognize that it is Mental Illness Month, and we can actually, um, play parts by getting to know more about it and also help out folks that's dealing with it, try to, um, offer some resource. We had a speaker here tonight, uh, from the library talking about the resources. We have all those resources available at our library. If you need resources, there's help there, and there's also resources. Also, it's also Asian Heritage Month. I want to wish all our residents of the Asian heritage community a well-spent month. Hopefully, you've enjoyed yourself and continue to enjoy yourself throughout the month. Um, normally, we put in these resolutions. It just, um, got by me this month. And, but we want to recognize and let you know that we support those. Thank you.
Anyone else for public announcements?
Any more second public announcements?
Let's have, let's, let's, let's have the counselors first, who have not. Uh, Counselor Vega?
I want to say, um, that this month is Haitian, um, Haitian, um, celebratory month. And given that we have such a huge population that has moved into our community, um, at our shelter and Soldiers' Home, and we also have the Day Center at La Colaborativa. Um, we have, you know, opened our arms in our city to our migrant families that come from Haiti. Um, and so I just wanted to say, you know, welcome, and we celebrate you and your beautiful culture. Um, yeah, thank you.
Any other public announcements? I just, I just have one if, if, uh, if it's okay. Um, this Thursday, we're going to have the flag planting in Chelsea Square across the, from the police department, 5 o'clock. Sorry?
We did it last week.
Oh, last week. My, my apologies.
Yes, let's encourage the people to go.
See how, see how this, the, the police chief will, will, uh, will be glad he wasn't the only one. All right. Sorry, Counselor Recupero?
Yeah, my last announcement is make sure you will come for Memorial Day here in Chelsea. That it will be a nice event and support your veterans that are here, and hope to see many of yous. And don't forget, I said it earlier, but I'm saying it again. The date is the 27th. So make sure that you come. Yous are all invited.
What time?
It's in the morning.
It's 10 to 12.
10 to 12.
The ticket, yeah?
Do we?
Don't forget to get your tickets. Without the ticket, you can't eat.
Okay. Yeah. I know.
Yeah, and the, and all the events that are here, so come and join us.
All right, any moments of silence?
Yes, I got a bunch.
Uh, Counsel Robinson?
Yes. Um, actually, my cousin, uh, Robert Crawford, who grew up here in Chelsea, passed away today. My friend and my daughter's, uh, father-in-law, Terry Griggs, who passed away, um, today. Irene Dublin, who grew up here in Chelsea. Her and her husband Tommy fostered over 300 kids, and they adopted about five of them. Teddy Sobolowski, who was the former Veterans Agent. And Richie Luteri, who grew up here and graduated from Chelsea High, was a law partner in Ropes and Gray, one of the biggest law firms in Massachusetts.
Counsel Vega?
I don't know this person's name, but I'm, I have very close relationship with, um, Jen Hassels.